It's just right up there.
What you're seeing is exactly what you're seeing. They have two computers. They have the small computer is like the individual reports, the larger, the display monitors. What you're seeing, they're connected directly. So if they're not looking at you and looking at a monitor, they're actually looking at what you're looking at. So it's kind of weird because you're like, what are they looking at? What are they reading? Yeah, exactly. But they're looking at what you're looking at.
I don't get it. Fight on that one.
Where's the PowerPoint? Maybe that next year.
I did not take this purse with me, so now I'm like...
Finding all sorts of...
Well, I like, you know, I took only the essentials out of my wallet and now I'm putting them all back in.
It works.
Can't you get rid of this? Can't you just...
He'll do a slideshow.
Okay, right. That's what I'm doing tonight.
If I do one of that now, you won't be able to minimize it very well.
Although I really don't want to cook, but I've been eating out for under...
Who's doing it?
I had a double-double in and out, protein style, which just means an lettuce wrap, like a lettuce wrap.
It's going to be this Adobe symbol down here. I won't, so...
I want another one.
So you just click on that. There's going to be two of them there. This one's Rich's, this one's...
I'd do that again.
So all you gotta do is click on that.
I'd totally do that again.
And then it comes up there and all you need to do is if you want to basically, you know, as you go through this, you can just slide the...
Palm Springs, Florida.
It's a clicker here to go through.
There's, um...
No, I put it as a PDF.
It's like, you're thinking, I think I know, there's, um, there's something...
Otherwise, they're good. Sound good? Yep.
You're like, wait a minute. You went to the other coast.
Clearly, she knows where she's going, but...
Sure? Are you sure that's where you wanted to go? Who, which one, Todd or Keith? Okay. Oh, don't log off? Okay. Okay.
I think, you know, we can...
Okay, yeah.
Do we see it now? People are attracted, people have an ability to bear stuff. They don't, you know, you see all these stores closing, where they're closed and that's where your sales packs are going. You can, you can maybe pick on one on online retailer, but there's, there's tons of them.
Right. Go.
Yes, you are.
Call meeting in order, please. Rise and join us for the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for being here today. Is there anybody wishing to address? No? May I please have a motion for approval of the minutes from February 28th and March 14th?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same motion. May I please have an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be disclosed? Hearing none. May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Now, the reports of the president. Academic program overview.
Good afternoon, President Tulkey, members of the board, Lon Heard, Director of Academics with Southeast Tech. And today I have the pleasure of introducing members of our HVAC and plumbing teams at Southeast Tech. And with me, we've got Jason Carlson and Paul Tungy, faculty for our HVAC program, and Vince Berry with the plumbing program, and they will give you an overview of their individual programs. So I will turn it over to the faculty members. Gentlemen.
Thank you very much for having us. The HVAC program at Southeast has been, from my understanding, since 1968. We're one of the first programs that was at Southeast Tech. At one time, we were heating, ventilation, air conditioning, refrigeration appliances. We have pretty much dropped the appliance part of it. Appliances used to include, you know, washers, dryers, refrigerators, stoves, things like that. We, um, they've gotten to be more of a disposable type of an appliance, cost more to repair them than the actual replacement, so we've kind of shortened things up and now we're more on just the heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and refrigeration, so... My name is Paul Tungy. I'm the first-year instructor of our program. That's basically the way the program is lined up, is we have a first-year and a second-year program. I've been instructor since 2004 until now, and I received my degree at Southeast Tech back in 1996. And in HVAC, I worked out in the field for about 10 years, and then I came to Southeast and when the opportunity rose, I received my bachelor's degree from Bellevue University last year for adult education and...
And I'm Jason Carlson. I'm in the middle of my first year. I went through Southeast in 2005, finished up there, and been out in the field ever since, and I'm almost done with my first year. Done really well. I've enjoyed it.
Right. No, anyway, everything has been, um, we both also, one thing we didn't really put on here, we are both contractors. We are out in the field throughout the year. Jason down in Beersford, South Dakota area, and I'm here in the Sioux Falls in the tri-county area, mostly outside of town type of work that I do, so we're definitely keeping up with what is going on within the industry and things, so... Anyway, during the first year of our program, some of the things that we're going to do, you know, everybody starts in the fall. Everybody starts their first year in the fall. We don't start any classes in the spring semester. Everybody starts in the fall. We have a number of core requisites of like, such as in the first semester is basic refrigeration, basic electricity, basic heating. A new course that we're going to be starting this semester also, or excuse me, next year, which is essential skills in the workplace, and Jason will be able to tell you a little more about that here when, here in a minute, but that's basically the first semester. They have to pass all of those courses in order to get into the second semester. They, they can't, um, if they, if they flunk in one of those or, or receive a D or, or lower grade, they have to have a C in all of their courses in order to pass into the next semester. So they would just be done at that time to where they would be able to maybe go and get some more of their general education courses done and come back again the next fall to get back into the program again and start over. But, and then the second semester after they've completed all of those courses would be heating troubleshooting, air conditioning installations, air conditioning troubleshooting, which is where we're at real close to right now is air conditioning troubleshooting. We also have a basic sheet metal fabrication class that is offered both in the spring and the fall semesters, and the students, we kind of try to put half and half in those just for security reason, well, or not security, but for safety reasons as just the amount of tools that are in there and the amount of people. If we can have, you know, only have, you know, 10 to 15 people in that in each, each one would be just about right, so that's how that works. And that's not a, does not have any, it's not a core requisite or anything to where, I mean, they can, if they don't, if they don't pass that in their first semester, they could take it again in their second semester without any issues, so... That's pretty much the first year of our program, which is also a diploma program. One great thing about our program is after they're done with the very first year of their program, they can walk out of Southeast Tech with a piece of paper in their hand saying that they have received a diploma and that they are, they are certified or, or have received a diploma in residential heating and air conditioning, which is real nice. And we, we, we sign everybody up who is in our, in our residential program. We automatically will sign them up for our second year of the program, which is our degree, which Jason will talk about here in a minute, but quite often we have people come in and only want the one-year program, and then they decide in about August, you know what, I think I'm going to go back to school. I think I'll go back and get that, that degree. So they're already in the, in, already all, all enrolled, and all they have to do is show up on that very first day. If they don't show up on that very first day, we can make a phone call to them, hey, would you like to come back? No, no, I only signed up for the first year. All right, well, we just wanted to make sure, you know, and, and that kind of stuff, so... But Jason can talk about the second year of our program.
We make sure that the first year mirrors, the diploma program mirrors our first year of the applied degree or the AAS degree, so that we make it easier for them to come back if they do decide that that second year is for them. That essential skills in the workplace that we're talking about adding for next year, we are adding for next year, that's just to get the students more people interaction, teach them about the non-technical aspects of being in someone's home or business. There's a lot that goes into that, price objective, management skills, all the things that you can see that are, can be a little bit scary, and I, we didn't think that experience is the first, uh, time that they should see some of that and be exposed to it.
A lot of that came from our advisory committee, that one of the things they said is just, just people, you know, contact of, of people, talking to people, you know, and, and it's amazing how some of the students will come in and just have that difficulty of communicating back and forth with, with people, with customers, you know, trying to sell them something at times. I mean, you got to sell them a new thermostat occasionally, you got to sell them a new air conditioner, whatever, just that general contact with people is, is what our advisory committee has been requesting, and hopefully we'll be able to answer that for them.
You want to talk about the employment?
I can, sure.
The first year employment?
During the first year of our, of our, for first-year employment, basically, what, what we do is about September, we'll have an open house, and we invite a bunch of contractors to come out. We usually will cook them some food, have a bunch of contractors come out and just mingle with the customer, or excuse me, with the students, and talk with the students about, you know, some of the things that they, some of their expectations of what they're going to be expected of in the field, you know? And at times, quite often, those contractors are also talking with the students. They know that these are students, they know that they have a schedule, they, they know what their schedules are somewhat, and they work around their schedules, and quite often, within the first month of school, a lot of our students have a, have a job already. And like I tell the students, if you need to have a job while you're going to school part-time, you might as well have it in the field you're going to school for instead of sacking groceries somewhere, you know? So, and then that gives them more experience. All the students that are actual, um, working in the field while they're going to school are always my better students. They can start applying things right away, but, so by the end of the first semester, I probably have 70% of my students are already employed in the field. By the end of the first, of the second semester, probably 90% are already employed. There are reasons why some are not employed. Most of them would be a personal reason for them. They just don't, you know, mom, dad's giving them money, why get a job? Some other things would be, some things we've talked about are people who are maybe not employable at the time. They come in and they have a DUI on their record, something like that. A lot of the contractors don't want to hire them just simply because they can't put them into a vehicle, and if they can't ensure them to drive their vehicle, they're not worth it to them, and they could be the greatest technician in the world, so... But otherwise, there really isn't any reason why the end of the first semester of school or the end of, of their first year, they shouldn't have a job. There's so many jobs that are in front of these students all the time. It's, it's a, they can cherry pick where they want to work.
So in our second year of our degree program, we basically take the skills that they learn in the first year and we expand on them. We try and have them be ready to be a finished product and be out in the field and be a service tech by the end of our program. We get into the design, installation, service, repair. We work on chillers, water-cooled condensers, cooling towers, ice makers, split systems, and the intricacies that go along with keeping one of those running in our wonderful winters around here. The geothermal heat pumps and the air-to-air heat pumps, those are something we spend a lot of time on. They're, we get them ready so that when they go out in the field, they're going to see almost anything on a daily basis. It's not, it's not the same job every day, that's for sure.
We, um, 24 students is, is what we really have as a, as a full class. I think I have a, have 28 as what it shows that they will enroll into my class. We always have a few that are no-shows at the beginning of the year, so if I want 24, we might say 28 put on the list, and, and back in about, it was about '04, somewhere in there, '05, somewhere in there, the highest that I had enrolled was 31. We don't have a lab assistant, so it's just a first-year instructor and a second-year instructor. And what was happening at that time, we cranked my numbers up a ways, thinking we're going to have a lot of students, and we, you know, I'd have, some, some years I would have six or seven people that were just no-shows, and we couldn't get a hold of them. So we said, well, you know what, let's take, and we'll put up to, we'll do 30, and we'll see what happens there. And sure enough, all 31 show up that one year. So that was a kind of a rough year, but approximately two-thirds of these will continue on to the second year of the program, but they also have a, a diploma in their hand. But the average pay has been right around 19 bucks an hour to start out with. That's when they get out of school. A lot of them aren't, not being paid 19 bucks an hour right on their, when they first get hired, you know? And then, of course, you got all the benefits and stuff to get worked in there too that aren't, that aren't looked at on that 19 bucks, so... And again, 100% placement we've had for years and years for those who are eligible to work, and again, the ones that are not eligible, there's reasons why that they are not eligible, and it usually has to do with something personal within them of their past as to why they can't go through. And the diversity, probably in the last five years, I've seen more diversity go through my program than what I have seen the whole time before that, the 10 years before that. I've had every nationality and that you can imagine, which is great. The one thing we haven't had very much of is females, which would be fantastic. I think that a female would have a, I think the sky's the limit for, for that in any of these fields that, that we offer, but I don't know if we're just not a very glamorous program or what it is, but I've only had three women that have went through our program since I've been there in 14 years, and only one of those has graduated, and she's still working here in town, and, but otherwise, I, you know, I don't know what else to tell you on that, but... Some of our students, about 90%, are probably here in the tri-state area, I would say. We have students that are in North Dakota, Nebraska, Montana, Washington State, South Carolina, Alabama, Arizona, California, Wisconsin, Indiana, and those are just of the ones that I know about. You kind of lose track on a lot of them, so I'm going to guess that probably, we could probably triple that would be my guess on that, but, um, and you can take a look here. I received this letter here from Frisbee's here not too awful long ago, and I can read that if you would like, but it, it basically says I got a... I want to take, what we can tell you, the value of Southeast Tech HVAC, our program. I, I, you know, I kind of, I said when you say, I'll take a talk, but, that's a very obvious thing to do. And basically, he just said they've been dealing with us for quite a period of time, they've bought 140, I believe, for quite some time now. We've utilized many technicians who have graduated from the program. We look to your program for graduates to find and pay for your training, and the first class skills needed for, to hit the ground running when they begin their careers here at Frisbee's. We got a priority to continue to find and attract top talent to our industry and still remember expanding demand for our services here in Sioux Falls metro area. It is truly a blessing to have such an excellent program available for us here, for our needs and for our future. And, and, and we hear that quite often from, you know, a lot of our advisory members and things like that, that there's some contractors in town that don't, that only have our technicians, that, and so it's kind of nice to see those guys out there. Otherwise, we'll continue on, I think, and we'll, we'll move Dan to last, I think, and we'll...
No, it's Vince.
Yeah, we're going to move on with, with Vince, I think, and then we'll talk about Dan Boss here.
We were told to wait till the end on this part of it, right?
Yeah. Tell me when you want to quit.
All right, that's me. I'm Vince Berry, the plumbing instructor. We're in our fourth year. Some of you probably have heard, we've had anywhere from one to 17 students in a year. I think Dr. Luck and I felt from that first year. Personal history on me, I worked for a company, you've probably heard of Ker and Blaine for about 25 years. We did a lot of work with the school district. I was the plumbing foreman at Discovery, Rose apart, so did quite a bit. And I say, fourth year to program now, but what can you do as a plumber in the residential? There's houses. I spent most of my time in the commercial field, I'd say, at the, uh, commercial field, like doing schools, churches, whatever. And new installations, where we really need the guys. Service and repair, there's always some work there, but not comparable to how Sioux Falls is growing and the demand. Two years ago, I had 13 students. A guy came in from Holland to do a little talk, and one student said, well, how many of us can you hire? And the guy said, all of you. That was just hollering, that was just holl, you know? That's a lot of the contractors like to have our guys too. So I'd say, right now, we've got 17. The numbers are looking better next year. We could hit a max of 24. We haven't hit that yet, but hopefully soon. The pipe fitting, boilers, that's all, on the plumbing, do a lot of piping, so a lot of our work you never see. A lot of it's underground, it's above the ceilings, it's in the walls. All you see is the faucet, the drinking fountain, and a lot of work that goes in behind it. 90-some percent of our work you probably never see, so... Just some pictures of the lab area. The lab area here, we do some whirlpool tubs, uh, we did a whole bathroom. We've got a full, basically, a house that's got about, you know, six bathrooms, a couple kitchens, but no living rooms, bedrooms, or anything like that, so... We got two stories. We got the basement down below, so they can do the underground work, like the under-the-flab. Kind of hard for me to see that, but even down in the basement there, soldering some pipes that are going upstairs, and you can kind of see the dirt floor and some of the PVC, the white sewer pipes around in there. We've got, you know, running water and everything in there, so when they get done, they do have to make everything operational, leak-free. Leak-free is obviously very important. You can do thousands of dollars of damage, small water leak, doesn't take long. Just another guy working on a water heater, that's obviously something plumbers do. And Floyd will be Boyd, as we say, right? They have a little fun doing it, right? Well, finish up pretty quick here, and what do you do, questions? All right, career in plumbing. After you about four years in, you can be a journeyman plumber, which basically means you can work for a contractor, you can call for inspection, you can be the job foreman, you can do all that once you get your plumbing license. Then a job superintendent is pretty much what I moved up to, where you might have 10, 12 guys, um, you know? I worked out at Roosevelt, Washington, out there on the front, it's back in those days, I say. My old company, we did quite a bit of school district work. And there's also the office stuff, the estimators and project managers. Maybe you want to get into sales, something like that, and after so many, after six years, you could become your own contractor as well and go into business. So we leave that all open. I mean, whichever way you want to go, I'm going to hire the superintendent spot, and never actually went in business myself. Guy may have just to walk away at the end of the day, you know? But it's for Jason and Paul what it's like when you go home, and then you still got to do all your bookwork and all that, so... Anyways, I just made the superintendent area. There are students that are working locally here, Handier, Howl, Frisbee's, Ker and Blaine, Midwestern Mechanical, there's Deager and Prairie Sons and Brandon. I've had kids from Platt. I know he went back home, Arlington, Minnesota, Iowa, it's all kind of tri-state area. You know, we did, something we need to work on, I think, is getting more students from the Sioux Falls school. They don't get a lot from Washington, Lincoln, Elgarman, or Roosevelt, you know? Something I think we need to work on recruiting more from this area. I'm not exactly sure I'll do that yet, but hopefully we're working on that. Yeah, now Dan can tell a story, and then questions?
This is Dan Boss. He's one of our second-year students now, and he's going to tell you a little bit about our program and how it's going currently for him.
Yeah, so I'm finishing up my second year of the program, and I work for Ker and Blaine as an HVAC service technician, and I want to point out that the prerequisite for me getting hired by Ker and Blaine within the first two minutes of the interview was, are you in the program at Southeast? And they said yes. As you can tell, I'm a, probably tell, I hope you can tell, I'm a non-traditional student or someone going to technical school, and I'm going to share with you a little bit of my unconventional path about getting here, because I think it's important to help realize why I'm here and why I really love being here and doing the work I do and things like that. So in high school, I had a counselor that told me, you would be best suited according to this graph of this career test that you took for nursing. And of course, I listened to her, and I went to Augustana College at the time, now university, for nursing. But what happened in that first semester is that chemistry and I just didn't get along, and I dropped out, not of, not at Augustana, but I dropped out of that program and instead, and try to shorten up the story a little bit, instead studied philosophy, and I did that because I loved writing and reading and thinking and discussing. Ended up finishing my degree at Augustana in 2011, and I worked at Lifescape here in Sioux Falls with children with disabilities and behavioral issues and things like that. A coworker there pointed me in the direction of graduate school and at SDSU, South Dakota State University. So I entered into, after a year and a half at Lifescape, I entered into the Counseling and Student Affairs Administration Program at South Dakota State University. Finished that program in two years. I was a first-year instructor, I was a hall director, and I also did a lot of research on the side for my advisor. At the end of that degree, the logical decision would have been, well, start applying to institutions of higher education, you know, think of a way to get your foot in the door, a place you want to be at or a job that you want to do. But at the end of the, the degree, I had to come to terms with, the work for me personally was not satisfying. I was good at the work, and everyone also thought I was good at the work, but when I came home... And they said yes. As you can tell, I'm a, probably tell, I hope you can tell, I'm a non-traditional student or someone going to technical school. And I'm going to share with you a little bit of my unconventional path about getting here because I think it's important to help realize why I'm here and why I really love being here and doing the work I do and things like that. So in high school, I had a counselor that told me, you would be best suited according to this graph of this career test that you took for nursing. And of course, I listened to her, and I went to Augustana College at the time, now university, for nursing. But what happened in that first semester is that chemistry and I just didn't get along. And I dropped out, not of, not at Augustana, but I dropped out of that program and instead, and try to shorten up the story a little bit, instead studied philosophy. And I did that because I loved writing and reading and thinking and discussing. Ended up finishing my degree at Augustana in 2011, and I worked at Lifescape here in Sioux Falls with children with disabilities and behavioral issues and things like that. A coworker there pointed me in the direction of graduate school and at SDSU, South Dakota State University. So I entered into, after a year and a half at Lifescape, I entered into the Counseling and Student Affairs Administration Program at South Dakota State University. Finished that program in two years. I was a first-year instructor, I was a hall director, and I also did a lot of research on the side for my advisor. At the end of that degree, the logical decision would have been, well, start applying to institutions of higher education. You know, think of a way to get your foot in the door, a place you want to be at or a job that you want to do. But at the end of the degree, I had to come to terms with, the work for me personally was not satisfying. I was good at the work, and everyone also thought I was good at the work, but when I came home at night, I just was not happy with what I was doing. So through SDSU, I met a contact who knew another contact that worked at a university in Bolivia, a country in South America. And I took a six-month hiatus and worked with students there in their community service program. So they had 80 hours of community service. They had to devote to the community in order to keep going to school at this university. And a lot of that was hard labor. It was building buildings, fixing electrical, plumbing, digging ditches, picking coffee beans, agricultural work, all sorts of stuff. And after coming back from that experience, I knew that even though I liked the thinking and I liked the reading and I liked the talking, I don't want to do that and get paid money. I'd rather do some more hands-on stuff. Instead of people problems, I want to deal with thing problems, component problems, for lack of a better word. So I came back and floundered a little bit, but I knew that I needed to look into a technical degree. And I went to Southeast Tech, and they had a day where you could tour different programs. And I happened to tour automotive technology, plumbing, diesel technology, and HVAC. And again, me personally, HVAC kind of took the prize because of the diversity of work that we have in it. I don't want to speak ill-will of plumbing because there are people that are very well-suited for that, too. And I'm sure there's a diversity of work to be done. But for me, I could see that the potential to just continue learning was there, and that was something that was really important to me. So now, looking back on it, I've only got a couple of weeks left of this, and I plan on working full-time at Kiran Blain. I definitely want to tip my hat to both Paul and Jason. I want to point to three things. I think patience is number one because you have a diversity of students, not only in nationality, but in age. The oldest guy in our class is, I think, 35, 36-years-old, and our youngest guy is 18. And that's a lot to work with, and it's a lot to manage because, as Vince said, boys will be boys, and sometimes that's not always the best thing. The second thing I want to point to is, these guys want the job to be done right, and they want it to be done well. And in the field, you realize very quickly, if you're not going to do it right, you're not going to do it well, it's not going to work, and you're going to be in big trouble. And I think these guys strive to instill in us that you need to have that accountability to yourself. You need to know what you're doing, and if you don't know what you're doing, you need to be able to ask a question and swallow your pride. And these guys are really good at communicating how to do that and different ways to do that, but they're also good at introducing multiple different systems and different concepts and things that we encounter every day. I already said the third one, but I think accountability speaks to all of it. Like I said, we have 18-year-old guys in our class that sometimes don't want to come in at 7:00 a.m. or 8:00 a.m., and they sometimes don't want to go to work every day, but it's a learning process, and it's something that everybody has to go through. And these skills that we're learning in the classroom, I think, is a really good buffer for the real world because that stuff just doesn't fly. So yeah, that's all I got to say. I'm very happy where I'm at with Kiran Blain, and I hope to be working in this field for a very long time. I can go home and feel satisfied with what I'm doing, and I can read books on my downtime. Thank you.
Thank you.
I applaud you for the decision, realizing early that the path you chose wasn't necessarily the right one for you. There are too many people out there that are in their 30s and 40s that come to that realization, and by then, life sometimes gets in the way. So kudos to you for making that decision early and realizing that there's a good life out there, other than necessarily what you looked at to begin with.
Thanks for sharing your story with us. I'm wondering if your decision not to go to plumbing had anything with that swirly picture? And what semester do you learn that in plumbing?
That's second semester.
Well, that's great. Any questions?
No. I mean, I think you look around Sioux Falls and you see, you can't hardly drive a block or two without seeing either a new construction or a remodel or something going on, both commercial and residential. So certainly, there is a place for the people that you're working with. And so, as you mentioned, I think it's great that you're really putting that extra effort in making sure that it's a quality job done, and not just for the reputation of Southeast Tech, but just because it's the right thing to do. And if they're going to be out in business, you know, and working for themselves, to just have pride in your work and have accountability for that. So I think that's great, and there's only going to be more as you look at how Sioux Falls and the surrounding areas are growing. And I would love to see you maybe tap more into the Sioux Falls School District students to see how you can get them here and interested. And so I look forward to seeing how those efforts pan out in the future.
We have been working with CTE, and we've been over there. We're kind of working back and forth with them houses that they're doing over there. I know that we are, along with the plumbing and the electrical program, are working with them back and forth. We talked to them more in the last year, probably than what we have in the last three years.
Good.
Hopefully, that's going to be coming around more and more all the time, you know, with that.
Good.
And I think one of the big things, too, if we can talk to some of the counselors that are in the high schools, you know, a little more about technical trades. And, you know, we have guys that are walking out of here after two years of school and are pushing that $60,000 a year. And I know a lot of people go to school in colleges for four years, that they come out making $30,000 a year or are doing a job that they don't even need a degree for.
With a big debt.
Yeah, it is a big debt. And that's what we tried to explain to some of these guys. One thing it wasn't, I don't think he, that Dan had said either, is he is one of the Bill Dakota Scholarship persons. So that was one of the reasons why, I'm sure that he decided to come to school here, too. So he knows. With his other degrees, I'm sure he understands what it costs to go to school. So that was a big factor of him to come to Southeast.
I have a random question. Where did you go in Bolivia?
It was about four hours south of La Paz. Oh, well, I guess more, probably more east, southeast.
Is it a university or?
Yeah, Campusina Carmen Pampa.
I thought you were going to say.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for coming.
One other thing. Are you related to Eric?
If it's a tolky shirttail somewhere.
He went through our program.
Oh, great.
You kind of resemble each other, so I thought maybe.
Really good-looking, tall, slim.
Yeah, excellent. Very handsome, very handsome. But no, I thought that maybe he was a brother or something, but he.
And we're related somehow, I'm sure. So thank you, guys. You know, what I see through this, the academic program I abuse is the pride that every group has, and it's really refreshing to learn about this and to see how much everybody cares about their different sections. So thanks, you guys, for putting this together. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you.
May I please have a motion to acknowledge the Southeast Tech? This is our story report.
I'm moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, Rich, we've got about four minutes.
Just kidding. Just kidding.
I think I'm okay with that, and I do appreciate the transitional skill associated with that swirly. That is something I have considered implementing when it comes time to balance the budget. We didn't have to do that this year, so I'm thankful to say that.
We might think about that after five minutes.
You, pencils ready? Perfect. Just very quickly, the budget process started last November. This is in your executive summary that was provided to the board. In the establishment, we brought forward some guidelines and timelines that we developed and proposed to you in terms of the budget. I'm happy to say, at the end of the day, there was a couple of key things in there that we wanted to do. One was, was we wanted to bring forth the balanced budget. We wanted our expenditures to be in line with our projected resources. The second thing we wanted to do was to maintain and protect our existing reserve balance. So the budget that's before you, to date, accomplishes those two goals or what was under those guidelines. So it is a balanced budget. Revenue and expenditures are equal, and we are not utilizing the fund balance this year in any planned way, either structurally or planned use of it to fund our operations. So as we look at the first slide that is up there, this is a comparison, budgeted to projected FY17, the budget of 17 and then the projected. This is the same information I presented in February. This is how we think we're going to end up in the year. If you recall, we've talked about this before. We built this budget with a structural deficit, with the goal and intent of finding those savings throughout the course of the year. We were able to do that, or we're projecting that we'll be able to do that by the end of June, and we'll achieve that balance. So we'll wind up not utilizing the reserves to cover that structural deficit. That's relevant as we go into the FY18 budget because of some of those savings that we realized during the course of this operations in FY17 carry into the FY18 budget. So there's been staff reductions through attrition, resignations, and retirements that'll be carried into the FY18 budget that was part of how we realized the savings in 17. And then across all the categories, when you look at our purchased services and our dues and fees and supplies and materials, those savings that we've realized this year are carrying into next year. If we start to see upticks in some of those other categories, it's really related to a revenue stream tied to it. So if there's more demand for classroom supplies, it's because there's more students in there. So that's a win-win when we get into that situation. Of course, we'll be monitoring that throughout the year. The last column there, the budget at 18, and then the change between the two years, as we look at the revenue adjustments from year to year, looking budget to budget, the main differences as it relates to that really are looking at the state bonding authority in terms of the funds associated with that. Our state revenue is declining in FY18. That's reflective of the budget project for the capital project, excuse me, for the new building coming to a close and being completed. The differential in some of that revenue between 17, the budget and the projection had to do with the shifting of the timeline of the budget or of that project. It was pushed into 17 a little bit more than what we had originally planned, but that's intended to be concluded the first part of July here. As we look at the, just keep going through these, the enrollments, the important thing as we look at this, obviously, we've been on a slide for the last four years that we are all well aware of. You've heard our consultant talk about our focus and shift to enrollment management. You've all received a presentation this. This is a very conservative, cautious estimate as we look at our credits for next year. We're seeing a lot of good things happening when we look at some of our key measurements at this time of the year. When you start to look at our applications, we're seeing an increase over where we were this time last year, quite a bit ahead of where we were. We've seen the same thing on the admit side. So optimism springs eternal this time of the year. Being a Twins fan, I can say they've won two games, so they're on 162-win season pace. But realistically, we'll continue to monitor that, and it's a long season in the improvement enrollment. Things are looking really good and really positive as we head into this fall. So as I project the credits for next year, it's just a slight uptick, and like I said, that's very conservative. I think we're going to surpass that. Not willing to commit to it today, but I think as we monitor throughout the year, I think we're going to, we're going to see that we're going to come in a little bit better than that. When we look at our charges for the year, the only changes that we're bringing forward between FY17 and FY18 are the tuition that's set by the State Board of Education. That was agreed to be increased $5 per credit. Tuition had been frozen the last couple of years. The legislature had provided dollars for tuition buydown. The state revenue sources weren't there this year. That tuition buydown didn't continue for a third year or wasn't increased for a third year, but it is continuing. So in FY17, the state was providing $10 tuition buydown to keep those level. That funding is not available to us in 18, so State Board came back with a $5 per credit increase, which is traditionally what we've done. So it's not out of line. That represents a 2.2% increase overall in our fee structure, which is comparable, probably actually even a little bit less if you've been reading the media reports on what the Board of Regents is doing. So we're very much in line and even a little bit below those rates of increase. One thing we are bringing forward is some very targeted program fees, and we'll delineate those for you when the final adoption in July. But we're looking at very specific programs that have some high costs related to the delivery of those, either instruction or the fees associated with it. But it's very targeted to just about half a dozen programs. So we're looking at our RN, our LPN, welding, plumbing, and HVAC, and law enforcement, proposing some very specific fees that'll generate a little bit of revenue, but nothing across the board at a local level. So 230 this year, 235 per credit for next year. Staff changes always come up, and if you've looked at any of the summaries and the two council members have seen this already. Just looking budget to budget, you're seeing a decrease in staff of 8.75 FTE. The majority of these are through attrition and retirements. There's not reductions. We are making one change in an administrative position, which is being categorized as a reduction, but it says, shift from a student services focus, moving to an enrollment focus. We're bringing back an individual in an employment contract situation, not in an administrative position, that's going to focus on enrollment. So that's going to be the focus going forward. The other positions, as we look at the clerical, that's just a change that was put forth in the FY17 budget to reclassify a clerical position into a specialist. We did not move forward with that just to save some dollars. The FY18 budget reflects that we're going to leave it as a clerical position as we go into next year. The employment contract's primarily related to the TAC grant, which is, program phase of it is completed, and we're just doing the closeout, which will end September 30th of this year. So the other things in the employment contracts are attritions that have happened this year, resignations. Eric had one in the IT area. There was another one in the student success. So this is reflective of those types of changes. Instructors, it's a net change, but again, it's tied to the TAC grant. We're actually providing some additional instructional resources in some of our health programs and through our adjunct, where we did have three outright retirements related to that. And then the specialists, the change there is, again, talking about that reclassification. And then in the diesel program, we had initially intended to have two specialists in that program. We moved it into instructor positions. So as you look at this, there's really more resources being applied in the instructional areas. The rest of the things that are happening are all related to attrition types of events. Revenue's pretty stable as we look across where we're going with this. Some slight changes in the, and again, this is looking at projected, FY17 projected to budget. When you look budget to budget, very similar in the numbers, the $5 per credit fee that were coming up, seeing a little bit of a, projecting a little bit of a decline in our state aid. Obviously, our federal funds is going to drop quite a bit in terms of that TAC grant coming to a close. The HB 1182 money that was salary enhancements in FY16, those dollars are carrying forward. Again, talked about the federal, and then the local was relatively consistent. Expenditure side, again, not a lot of changes in there. Overall, a little bit of an uptick, budget to budget on our wages, decline in our full-time salaries, but an increase in our adjunct. So it's just getting the right resources to the right area in terms of our instructional programs and our operational needs. One thing to mention, too, that's maybe a little bit different, what you're hearing on the K-12 side, in terms of salary packages with the passage of HB 1184, that's really uncoupled the Southeast from those collective bargaining agreements. So we are no longer, if you're employed by a technical institute, covered under the terms and languages of this. So one of the things we're proposing in this budget is a freeze of salaries. We're not looking for any cost of living adjustments. We'll wait for better times, and we'll wait for my enrollment number to uptick, and then we'll come back and look at that. But we first got to return our numbers and get them back to where we're going. Final thing is some enterprise funds. We have three enterprise funds that operate as business entities, business-type activities, bookstore, food service. Getting a little more predictable what type of activity and volume we're having in there. So a little bit of an adjustment from the prior year's budget, and then finally, our Scarborough Center is staying relatively where it was. Jumping into the final slide here, this is the important piece. This is one of the things that we always take a look at and say, what are the decisions we're making? we're making today and how does that project out into the five years? How does that project where we think we're going to wind up in our position, overall financial position? So as you look down the FY eighteen column, you look and I think the, the box I really want to pay attention to is the one just above the, the yellow, two boxes above that where it says $0. What that is, again, passing on to you folks is the fact that our revenues and, and our projected expenditures are meant to be equal. So we're bringing in that balanced budget. And we take those expenditures as a, as we're planning for in eighteen and we look out into the future and we project some inflationary components to it and I would tend to say very conservatively as I do that. Conservative on the revenue side, but I think we can grow faster than what we am projecting to grow. The expenses I tend to project maybe a little bit higher as a conservative approach to that too. So the, the important thing to see as we look out onto that fifth year, we're still very fiscally sound in terms of our fund balance overall. We're setting aside some things for capital expenditures down the road. One of the things that we did change from the council presentation is there was a request made that, that fund balance, the operating part of it, which is that bottom line was dipping fairly low. So we went out and did a review on our capital projects and said, there's some things that we just don't need to do if we don't have to do them. So it's really, again, waiting for those better times to do it. They're not mission critical pieces, but they're things that we would like to eventually do. So there's some infrastructure improvements related to our, our HORT program, looking to construct an outside classroom that we'll delay and push out. We had some renovation in the health building to create an anatomy and physiology lab. Right now, we outsource the instruction of those to the University of Sioux Falls. We can still continue to do that and not impact our operations. Had several large pieces of capital equipment that we're going to push out and delay, maybe tie it in with our capital campaign through our foundation. So we're looking for other resources. It's not that those things are off the radar, we're just delaying them outside and pushing them out until those times are better. The other thing that's happened in the last couple of years too, as it relates to capital equipment, we've received funds through the state, through the Governor's Office of Economic Development. That usually comes as a grant, so we never program those dollars. We wait until we actually see that, if we're going to receive notification of those dollars coming in. That's where we come back and look to supply on some of those things that we've maybe pushed out in terms of equipment. So I know I had four minutes, I'm longer than that, but I did, I did want to just kind of hit the highlights. I think the, the major takeaway is again, coming in there and recognizing that we did bring in a balanced budget. We're not developing this one with a structural deficit. Obviously, we use the savings that we're realizing and carrying those into FY eighteen. It doesn't come without sacrifice and some pain when we look at salary adjustments that we're going to hold off on. Obviously, there's positions that serve a purpose at Southeast that through that attrition process, we're, we're delaying and holding those. But as we start to see numbers improve, which all the signs are, are very, very positive and very moving in the right direction and look very good, the energy's there and the things that are happening, not only from a budget standpoint, but out in terms of the community and the, and you've heard Bob talk about the sector breakfast and bringing in industry and talking about what those needs and what's being developed. There's just a lot of positive momentum going the right direction. Now, when I put my finance hat is, I want to see the numbers and then we can talk about making these changes and bringing these things forward. So again, I'm optimistically going to predict that we will be back this fall with positive things to talk about in terms of our numbers and talk about things that we want to start getting back to restoring because it just builds on itself then. So again, very high level, a couple of the council members that participated in it got a little more of the, the droning on, a little bit more of the detail in terms of the budget, but I think the executive summary captures what's happening in our FY eighteen budget.
Just the growth alone in student population's exciting.
Yes, and it, like I said, it's, the uptick is very conservative. Over the last five years, we've probably seen a, an average percentage decrease right around that four and a half percent. There's really no reason that that cycle can't be turned around and started seeing it going the other way, but my projections are looking at a smaller number than that. So again, taking that very conservative approach to it. But again, applications and admissions are all pointing in the right direction.
Now, we're in a public hearing to approve the proposed budget. Want to make sure I made that announcement, make sure there's nobody in the crowd that has any comments or statements. Hearing none. Do you, anybody have any questions?
I'd just say that, you know, there was lots of information presented at the tech council meeting and, you know, Rich has, has mounds of information behind this, which is always comforting to me. The only nuance I always say is when you look at the yellow line and you see 20-some percent or whatever fund balance, it's because it's a little different here because what's included here is our capital funds.
Correct.
So it's a little different. When you're looking on the K-12 side and you see a 9%, it, you know, it doesn't include our capital type expenditure. So you really have to look down at the, the very bottom line and you see it, you know, more in the 10% range, which is where we want to be. So that's the only nuance in this budget, but, you know, overall, I think it's a, it's a good plan and five-year projection looks good. There's some nice to haves that we, you know, that if we can fund them through grants from the Governor's Office over time or things like that, or revenue gets better, we'll fund those.
Right.
But, you know, we have the same list on the K through 12 side, right?
Right.
It's just projects we want to do, but we just can't fund yet and hopefully, you know, we'll be able to do those over time, but appreciate the diligence and holding the line and, and, you know, keeping us at a, where we should be over time, so.
Well, it's a, it's a group effort. You know, two people holding, one people in the tank, so.
It's a good group effort.
Right.
Appreciate that. Any other comments? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the FY eighteen proposed budget and tentative adoption of the FY eighteen proposed budget.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That carries.
Thanks, Rich. I would like permission to address the council on a quick matter. It's just really an update I wanted to, to let you know. We had our third sector breakfast this morning and just been very impressed. I want to thank the individuals in the room here, but even more so, the community members that have really engaged in these conversations and we've had some strong facilitation. As you all know, we've, we've held these with a panel of different industry executives and now in healthcare and transportation and this morning was construction trades. And have been so impressed with those individuals. This morning, we had four presidents from construction companies from the region, so not only from Sioux Falls, but from the region, and the conversation was outstanding. And each one of these, we've had more and more individuals that want to participate. So we started with the healthcare sector breakfast. I think, again, we had over 50 healthcare professionals attending, individuals like Dr. Kapaska from Avera and others, so some high-level decision makers. And those are the individuals we, we've tried to engage. And the same, I would say, for the transportation sector breakfast. We had over 70 community members attend. Today, I think we were pushing 90 with the construction trade sector breakfast. And what was so positive about it was the fact that it wasn't just Southeast Tech. You know, Dr. Maher was there as part of the, you know, the Sioux Falls School District, representing the Sioux Falls School District, Josh Hall from CTE, Jason Bald, the, the new president of the, the chamber was also there, Lon Clemison from Forward Sioux Falls. And it, it was a great conversation and, and I'm excited about that. You know, Rich has talked a little bit about the numbers. We're actually, for both February and March now, we're in double-digit increases over where we were a year ago in terms of applications and admits. Means nothing until we get closer to, like he said, August and closer to startup and so forth, but there's a lot of energy and effort that's gone into this and, and it isn't just the individuals in the room. It's been a campus-wide effort. The faculty have been outstanding in terms of engaging the community as, as well and helping with these sector breakfast conversations. And, and frankly, Pam's here, I'd like to thank Pam and other faculty at Southeast Tech that participated in some very difficult budget conversations. Now, we brought into this year $640,000 deficit and, and through, I think, working collaboratively, we were able to address that. So it's not easily done, but very proud of the effort put forth so far and we want to continue that as we continue to engage the, the community and different industries with the sector breakfast. And one of the conversations was, we need to restore the honor of working with your aunts. And I, I thought Dan Voss, the student that spoke here, really spoke well to that. So thank you for your support. I know each of you have been very, very supportive of the initiative and the effort. And I think with that, if we're, we're going to continue and we have an information technology sector breakfast coming up and later in April and then also one on diversity that I think we're talking about hosting again with the chamber, with Forward Sioux Falls and potentially doing that over the summer. And I think that has certainly the possibility of, of being the largest of, of the breakfast or the, the meetings that we've been currently engaged in. So thank you for your support and it was such a positive event, I had to come up here and say something about it.
That's just another example of why it feels like we're moving in a positive.
And the Twins won too, you know, so. So, thank you.
Be that, thanks, Bob.
Anything else? Do they have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.